I'll call this meeting of the city council to order here. Today's September 13th, 2022. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Bermal?
Here.
Harrington?
Here.
Sittig?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Waisel?
Here.
Thank you. And could I have a motion for approval of the agenda? There's no changes than what you see in front of you.
I'll move that, Mayor.
Second.
Been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Item four is our consent agenda. There was a question that you had asked Ryan. Hopefully it was satisfactorily answered. Are there other questions or items to pull off of this to discuss separately? All right. Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Item five is reserved for public comment. You guys don't have to stand up. We have some guests in the audience working their way towards a Boy Scouts badge. I won't announce your name in public, but welcome to the meeting. You picked the short one to be at. This is a time reserved for members of the audience to provide comment to items that are not on our agenda. So this is what's called public comment time. You don't have to stand up unless you want to give a speech of some sort that you're prepared for. No? You good?
We're good.
Okay. All right. We'll close the public hearing. The public comment period. Item six is our engineer report. Kevin, I hear you have some wonderful news to share with us.
Sure. Let's start with Rancho.
Yay.
So we're getting close.
Yay.
You might be seeing some more trees and sod. And I saw that they were actually still working when I came in. So that's good news. And the pavement marking contract subcontractor, they should be here maybe even tomorrow to start working on all the new pavement markings. So that'll take a few days. But and then we got to finish up the landscaping. But we're guesstimating maybe even in a week or so, they'll be able to start removing the cones. So we're getting really close. We're pretty happy with what's taken place so far. We've already started some of the walkthroughs on the final inspections because there'll be quite a bit of time spent on doing the walkthroughs and getting a punch list ready for the contractor. But it's, we're pretty happy. Move over to the Dubuque Street Phase One project. So this project, there's six construction phases. They just finished Phase Four. So they did open up the intersection of Front Street and North Dubuque today. So we're happy with that. The contractor is behind schedule on this. This is a strange one. It's a working day contract. They have 120 days. They've used 91 of those days. It's been a really dry summer, so we've been charging five days a week because they have no excuses for not working. So they've spent about 76% of their working days and only completed about 65% of the work. So they're in danger of exceeding their working days. If they do, they'll be charged liquidated damages, which are $2,000 per calendar day, and they're well aware of that. There's also a bonus if they get, it's called a no excuse bonus, if they're substantially complete and open to traffic by November 18th. So it's possible we may be paying them a bonus and also charging them liquidated damages. They're still shooting for that November 18th, and we had our meeting with them on Monday. And that's really always been the goal, is to get the thing open before winter. And before Thanksgiving would be great. But we're happy that Phase Four is open to traffic. Now we'll be working on Phase Five, and that's from the end of that paving to just the north side of Cherry Street. And it also includes Penn Meadows Park improvements, which they have a good chunk of that already completed. So they'll, I also saw them unloading an excavator when I drove in today. So I think they're going to start on the paving removals for Phase Five tomorrow. City Hall, we had the bids, and we'll be discussing that later this evening. Jones Boulevard Extension, real happy with that one. They, I think they'll be done well ahead of their working day contract. They're projecting a November-ish completion date on that. They've, let's see, they've got all the water mains done and tied in at Penn and 240th Street. They're about 90% done with the sanitary sewer and storm sewer, and they started the paving of it last week. They're about 70% done of the mainline paving of Jones Boulevard. So that one's going really well. We like working with that contractor. And then lastly, just a quick note, community center roof, all the roofing membrane material has arrived, and the contractor has started work. So they're just getting underway. We talked to their project manager just today. He's trying to get his guys to have that done in five weeks. So they should also be done ahead of their deadline date, November 1st, with final completion December 1st. So that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions for Kevin?
Kevin, remind me, with Jones Boulevard Extension, I've had a couple of questions about the trail. Is the trail coming, the repavement of the trail coming with the completion of the road?
Yes.
Or it will be open for fall?
It's part of the project. So yeah, they'll be paving that trail after they get the mainline paving done.
Okay. Excellent.
Any other questions? It's almost like Christmas here, projects get completed. Thank you, Kevin. City administrative report, please. Ryan.
Okay, thanks. Tonight, I just wanted to point out a few things in the department head updates that I think deserve a little more attention than just being kind of stuck in the back of the packet. The first is the city slate brochure. If you've seen that, a kind of recap, you hear us or our team, Nick and Jillian, talking about this throughout the year. But I think that gives a really good snapshot of the entertainment and recreation opportunities that we're providing for the community, all free with the help of sponsors. So I think they noted at the end of the year, it'll be over 40 events and approximately 45,000 people in attendance. I think that's a pretty strong commitment to entertainment and recreation opportunities. The other two are related to utilities. One is, you may have seen in Greg's report, that we got our lead and copper samples back. They are the lowest they've ever been. Greg was really happy about this. We've never had really any issues, but we continue to get better results with this new treatment plant. The lead came back as non-detect, meaning the lab couldn't detect any lead in any of the samples. And then copper was well below any sort of concerning rate. So very happy with how the treatment process is working at the new water plant. And then from a wastewater perspective, you may have read that Drew and his team have participated or are participating in a nutrient optimization tour, or they have participated in this. It's not like a winery tour or anything. It's probably fairly boring to most people, but they enjoyed it. And it included a handful of plants throughout eastern Iowa. The University of Iowa was involved, DNR was involved. And then they brought a specialist in. I think Drew referred to him as the guru in biological nutrient treatment. And what this allowed us to do, basically, was add another tool into our tool bag. This fellow who they've been working with is very knowledgeable in biological treatment. And so we've worked on things with him, like fine tuning our treatment process for efficiencies, both from a cost standpoint. In other words, how can we get the same treatment or better treatment for less cost? And then also just on the water quality piece. And Drew's really excited to continue to have a conversation with this guy. It's interesting, as we get more flows in, more waste from the community, the biology or the biologics change, and so the treatment has to be tweaked. So it's well above my head, and thankfully Drew is very capable of managing this. But with these outside partners, we're able to tweak, refine, and improve our treatment process. And there's a little more detail in that, in the reports. And of course, if you want any other additional information, if you want more science about what's happening, we can get that to you. But it's pretty impressive what these folks are doing. And that's what I have this evening, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Ryan? I'll echo what you just said there. I won't add it into my report. There was a lot of great stuff in my packet from those department heads specifically. So thanks for highlighting that. Item eight is our mayor's report. I've got a proclamation to read, and then I've got a number of things that have just been going on in the last couple of weeks and the week ahead as well. So I'm going to start with the proclamation. And this is our proclamation for welcoming week, which will be, we're in the middle of. We just started this a couple of days ago. So you're now joining Welcome Week in progress. Whereas new residents make up a vital part of our community and robust growth, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. And whereas North Liberty's success depends on making sure that all persons feel welcome here. And whereas regardless of where we were born or what we look like, we are united in our efforts to build a stronger, more prosperous, more inclusive North Liberty community. And whereas all new North Libertarians are worthy of a sense of belonging to our community, a feeling fostered by peers, neighbors, and local governmental entities through positive interactions and equitable access. And whereas the City of North Liberty maintains a network of neighborhood ambassadors, residents who promote an atmosphere of belonging, engage in equity work, understand the unique character of their area, and serve as a conduit between residents and resources. And whereas North Liberty residents and business owners, local elected officials, and city employees continually and intentionally work to build a community where every resident has the opportunity to contribute their best. And whereas the City of North Liberty aspires to be a bridge connecting the diverse immigrant community with existing residents so that common ground and shared leadership can be realized. And whereas welcoming week is an annual campaign and celebration to showcase the movement of communities striving to be more welcoming places for all, including immigrants. And whereas the City of North Liberty will celebrate welcoming week with a free concert and a taste around the world featuring local musicians with international roots and local vendors serving international cuisine on Sunday, September 18th. And whereas during welcome week, we honor the spirit of unity which brings people together across North Liberty, the greater Johnson County area, and the nation. And whereas we encourage our residents to join this movement of communities nationwide by participating in local welcoming week events and by demonstrating commitment to our core American values by taking action in the spirit of welcoming. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the City of North Liberty, Dubai here recognize September 9th through the 18th as welcoming week in the City of North Liberty. If you have an opportunity to stop over there this weekend to check that out, it's from 2 until 4, I believe, on the 18th. Should be a pretty cool event to be a part of. Just had a couple of other things in no particular order. I wanted to pick up where Ryan left off a tiny bit in his report on the, in our packet. You would have seen the library packet report that Jenny Garner, our librarian department head, wrote in there, and that next week is banned books week in libraries across the country. And she'll be celebrating, and they've had great resources out there at the tables to recognize that. And also to recognize Jenny as being the president-elect of the Association of Rural and Small Libraries. So she's having an impact in that way. Speaking of libraries, in a couple of weeks, the library will be dedicating a section of the north side of Liberty Center, Pond. They've started installing, you would have seen that in the packet as well, those placards, and installing a permanent story walk there with a ceremony on Wednesday, September 28th, and that's at 10:30. And Eric, thank you in advance for doing that. I'll be at the League of Cities conference already heading up there that morning. See, September 24th, you would have seen that in the packet as well, or the 10th, or October 8th. Our Parks Department will be planting trees throughout the community, so stay tuned for that. We've had a number of trees throughout the community as residents have suffered the Emerald Ash Bore. Those trees have been taken down, a number of them still to be taken down. So this is an effort to help to re-green and to rebutefy the city. A couple of weeks ago, I went to the League of Women Voters of Johnson County's Fall Reception, and their keynote address was provided by Dr. Jean Donham, PhD. And it was an interesting topic, very timely over the last couple of years, called conspiracies, hoaxes, and rumors discerning facts in a 24/7 news cycle. If you have an opportunity to look up Dr. Donham, this is the work that she's been doing for 30-plus years. So it wasn't just an off-of-the-cuff presentation. So it was right in her wheelhouse, and really helpful and informative. Finally, in two Sundays from now, before we meet again, I'll be volunteering at the Houses into Homes, first time ever, Comfort Food Cookoff. It's a fundraiser that they're putting on, that the entire community is invited. You'll see it out on social media. That's Sunday, September 25th, at the Green State Credit Union headquarters out there on Landon Road. And that's from 2 until 6, Sunday afternoon. All right, I'll stop talking. That's all I got. Are there any reports from council? It's been three weeks since we've seen each other. No bear attacks?
Nope.
Survived the bears, all right.
Enjoyed our neighbors to the north. I had a great time.
Good deal. Good deal. All right. I'll move on to the moment we've all been waiting for, our City Hall project, item 10. Ryan, do you want to start off this discussion and lead us through this?
Sure. Well, we were as happy as we were going to be with the bids. We, as you might recall and as tried to outline in the memo, we evaluated, updated costs multiple times throughout this design process based on what we were hearing from contractors, a third-party estimator. And going into bid day, our hope was that we would be about, for the base bid, I should hope, based on what we were hearing, would be about $8.6 million. And you saw the base bid, at least the low base bid came in at 8.597. So we felt pretty good about that. And we felt good about the alternates in terms of the HVAC controls. Those were all competitive. So we think, we think based on our conversations after the bids with a couple of the bidders, that what you're seeing are responsive bids, we feel good about the fact that both the companies that are in the running here tonight would do a fine job. What the memo outlines is that we are recommending, the staff's recommending that we move forward with city construction, awarding them the base bid as well as alternate one and alternate two. As a reminder, the alternates are specific to the pedestrian plaza that we've been talking about for some time. Certainly, the city council has an option not to, well, there's actually three options, maybe even four, but we'll, let's just start with three. The first is to award the base bid only. The second would be to award the base bid in alternate one. And the third would be the base bid, alternate one and alternate two. We're recommending what we're calling Scenario Three. In order to do that, we would advise then that the city council borrow additional money to fund the additional costs. And what we're proposing is $500,000 of additional money above and beyond the $9 million for this project. The other funding would come from various sorts, including utility or utility capital funds and the general fund surplus, not to be confused with the reserves, but the general fund surplus. So maybe I'll leave it at that. That's kind of a highlight. And then answer questions, and we can certainly discuss anything or any questions you have in further detail.
I'm just wondering if, just for, if there's anyone watching, can we have a little more description of what the two alternates are, so we can...
Yes. And I will refer you to page, I realize folks that are watching may not see this, but I think if they were, have access to the packet online, I believe it's page 27 that shows what we're talking about here. And Kevin, I'm going to, I'll start and you jump in with anything that I missed. But no alternate, just the base bid, would include really just a sidewalk around City Hall, around the campus. Alternate one, that you can see on the left side of the page, on page 27, includes more of a, I guess, I'll call it Phase One of a pedestrian plaza that includes brick and more decorative plannings, and an opportunity to, for a gathering space, albeit a small one in this case. And then alternate three really provide, or beg your pardon, alternate two provides really the total build out of a pedestrian plaza that would open up into, or I should say, the indoor facility, the training room that we've called, that would open up under this, into this plaza. So an opportunity for an indoor/outdoor event, opportunities for small gatherings, farmers' markets, we've talked about, maybe a little band, any sort of gathering, community gathering of sorts. And it's hard to, I think, anyway, and maybe Kevin can jump in, but it's a little hard to articulate everything that comes with that. There's a substantial amount of paving, brick pavers, landscaping, trees, screening that will certainly provide a beautiful identity for this new civic building. If that's responsive to your question, Eric, or not.
It is. Thank you. What kind of paving, are we using permeable paving at all in this project, or other water quality? Good question, yeah. Alternate two provides for the permeable pavers. So a fair amount of that will be permeable pavers, which would be fantastic for water quality.
And then the parking lot is underground detention, correct?
Yeah, and that's in the base bid. So underneath the parking lot is all underground detention.
Do you guys have questions? Yeah, go ahead, far away.
Just as far as the bidding concerns, it just seems that city's bid for alternate two is a lot lower than the other people. Which, you know, that makes me wonder a little bit. It's like, what do they have? I mean, they're local, but are we sure they understand what we want?
We called them with the very same question, because I think there was one or two other bidders who also had a strange number in that for that. They assured us that they have everything included. I mentioned the screen wall, because that's a big component of alternate number two. I said, yep, we've got the screen wall included.
Okay. So it just seemed like it was just so far out of whack for permeables. And then just as a, you know, do you want to talk about funding now, or do you want to...
I think it's all related, Ryan.
Okay.
Yes.
And so we have, you know, some of this money, we're not going to dip into our reserve, our reserve fund will stay at our, whatever our goal was? Even you were using some of this extra money?
General fund. Correct. So the general fund, just a reminder maybe for everyone, the general fund policy, the general fund balance policy states that the city council will keep a minimum of 25%, a 25% reserve, and a maximum of 30% reserve. And we've always been and continue to be at 30%. And then the surplus is anything above that 30%. So the funding we're proposing to use here includes, is the surplus. It does not include the reserve and would not take us below that 30%.
So we'll stay at 30, not dropping it?
That is correct.
Okay. And then using some of the wastewater and water capital funding stuff, is that going to do anything to the rate forecast for down the road?
Oh, it shouldn't. It's not, it's a separate capital fund outside of what you see as the operational models. It's money we set aside every year for capital projects. And in this case, because City Hall is the administrative billing offices for utilities, it would make some sense to use those funds.
How much do you estimate of staff are involved in the billing for water and wastewater? Just roughly?
A couple are at least 75%.
Right. So a big chunk of City Hall is doing the billing for that?
Yes.
And this ends up being less than 2% of the total project?
Yeah. Not, and not, four of them are probably somehow directly related to, or help, you know, with bill collection and shut offs and things like that.
Every day.
Right.
Yes.
And then a couple of them, two, well, three of them probably really are... It's, I'd say 75% plus.
Yeah.
So a huge chunk of the work being done at City Hall is really related to a lot of these things. And so it sounds like 2% of the total budget, then maybe it's not, you know, really out of line for that?
I would agree.
Good question.
In addition to that, the, you know, the cost for the water in the sewer are about, looks like the estimate's about $60,000 to $70,000. So it's not insignificant for those two utilities.
Go ahead, Ashley.
Is there any opportunity for us to put solar on the roof or to have any sort of opportunities for, to have some sustainable construction in terms of...
Have you been talking to the mayor?
Pardon?
I know how to feed her.
Have you been talking to the mayor? What we've done with our other three solar projects is put it on after the fact through power purchase agreements. And so it's a public-private partnership, or it was in that case, so that the city can actually, in that case, take advantage of a tax credit they normally wouldn't be able to take advantage of. We haven't looked into that potential yet, Chris. You'd know more on what credits are available now.
Yeah, it's not, it's not something that would be appropriate at this point in this project because of that opportunity. That funding could come from a third party. It wouldn't come from us having to borrow the funds for it.
Gotcha.
So as part of the conversation, when we modified the police station's rate change, I was looking at that as to whether that would be a good idea in lieu of or alongside of solar on that as well, and kind of keep my eye on that.
The reason why I ask that green space next to the city hall, would that be an area that could potentially be a space where you could put solar panels? Or would you try to put them all on the roof if that was, okay?
The roof.
And structurally, the building would be able to do that?
Yeah, we have some locational criteria, too, that limits putting them in what kind of is what we call a front yard. It's limited to rear yard for ground-mounted solar.
Okay.
So Mayor, I know that you've told this story to me. I know that you've told it a number of times. I know that you and Brian have been part of this since 2007. Give us a brief history in just reminding those that are watching where City Hall has been in its phases. Where did we start? And how did we get to this space?
I gotta put my old man hat on here. Do I need to grow a quick beard here and settle in? So when Brian and I started here, city council chambers were in the fire station. They were part of it. The police station was across the street. And it just so happens I have the document with me here tonight, but we conducted a facilities plan in 2007. It started in 2006. And it identified all of the buildings in the city for renovations, and City Hall was the last one in there to be done. So how long have we been in this building? Six years? Eight years?
2010.
I keep doing that. I keep underestimating this.
2010.
2010, 12 years. So we've been renting this facility for 12 years, and we will for another two. But the for sale sign's already outside.
So just as being a little older, when I moved here, City Hall was, you would walk in, and that was the office where the fire chief offices. That was City Hall. And the library was where their big train room is and stuff. So before there was a police department. So, yeah, it's well overdue.
So Ryan, in the 12 years we've been in this building, what have we spent on rent in money that we will not see return on?
Well, I can't give you the 12 years.
How about five?
Okay, that helps.
Math is easier.
So over, well, from 2019 up until through 2023, we will have paid just over $1 million in rent. So that averages about $206,000 a year. And so I would say for that 12-year span, we probably averaged, you know, $190-plus thousand a year when you, when you look at all of it. So it's, well, and I should take that back a little bit because we started, actually, just in... just in Pod 3.
Sorry.
And then expanded over to here. So, there'd be a little discrepancy there. But right now, in 2022, the rent due will be 200, almost $213,000. And we pay that in two installments. It's substantial.
So, then, Mayor, my thoughts go to the de novo project and the community branding and visioning. Really, what you're seeing with this alternate one versus alternate two, in my mind, the building is there. It's been agreed upon. The council agrees that that's a much-needed facility. We set out on a project to listen to input from our community, to think outside of the box and come up with creative ideas. And that's what that visioning project brought us. I think you see a lot of that in the design of option two for City Hall. It took that input. It took some of those grandioso ideas of what we needed as a city and what they were, what citizens were looking for. And I see that space, the building is, is staff space. Yes, it, it's a place for the public to come in and do, and do your city business. But what is truly usable by citizens of the community, in my mind, is that outside space and is that pedestrian area and is, begins to build that, that area and that space for what we vision through this visioning project is that kind of Cherry Street corridor idea. And, you know, it's, it's easy to go out to contractors and business owners and say, hey, we have this grandioso idea of what this corridor and what this pedestrian-style space is down Cherry Street. But it's quite another for us to help anchor that and be, you know, literally put, put our money where our mouth is and really go out and be able to show, showcase that this is, this is what we're looking for. We're searching for that, that one thing, that, that identity. And I think that that corridor can be one of those things. I don't think North Liberty's going to be just one thing eventually that draws people here and visitors to want to come here. I think it's going to be a number of things. But for me, with the money that is spent, it really is for more usable space for our citizens, not just office space for staff. And so, I'm, I'm more inclined tonight because of those things, because of the history, because of the money that we are paying out in rent and because of the need that the citizens have told us through the visioning project, that option one and two would, I would be in favor of tonight.
Great points, thank you. Any other questions or anything else to add to the discussion?
I think Brent hit it right on, on the head with just capturing all of those things and the potential for utilizing that space, just, not just for workspace, but how do we bring the community out and highlight those areas that have been addressed and renovated and worked on to envision how to bring North Liberty together? So, I, I agree with you on what you just said.
And there are some businesses around there and I know they want to expand a little bit. And I think, you know, you put something like this there, that's going to make their jobs a little easier to really go all out.
Not to be redundant, I totally agree with the points that everyone's made. And I also, you know, feel that having lack of a traditional downtown, so to speak, this truly will be the identity, the face of North Liberty. My biggest question is, does staff feel like it portrays that artistically or architecturally in its design? Because I do think that in a lot of ways, it will be a representative of our town in a weird way that that sounds. I mean, a building is kind of the beacon, so to speak, for people to come together and identify North Liberty as a place on the map.
And to your question, I think the simple answer is yes, we do. We've worked closely with the landscape architect on this particular project, on numerous projects. And she, she's been great. And I think as you look at this piece, as you look at what you're seeing being constructed right here, being under, the underpass at Ranshaw Way and various other projects, roundabouts, for example, they, they are all unique but also tie in together. And so, we're pretty excited about what's, what's being, what is proposed.
All right, thank you all. Let's move into the resolution. One on the agenda is bland, and I think it's that way on purpose. Resolution's in our packet, identifying bid alternate number one and number two being included in this, creating scenario three on there. So, I'll read the resolution, number 2022-95, a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing execution of the contract for the City Hall project, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for this resolution, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions?
Mayor, I don't think we, we mentioned the unit price also that was included in the bid. I think we should. That would also be accepted. It's a unit price of $50, $52 per cubic yard for over excavation.
Okay, so would you like to have that as?
To be.
Couldn't have mentioned this.
Only had a couple of weeks to.
A little bit before here. Show me what you're talking about with the unit price, please.
This was part of a bid. They put in a unit price for the over excavation.
Okay.
But that, that's a sharp part of the base bid, though, right?
Is this not three, yeah, this is not part of the base bid?
I'm sorry, folks. This is the base bid. And then you have your three alternates and a, and a unit price.
Oh, and a unit price. And the unit price is part of the, is part of the city construction, right?
Correct.
To, to.
What that is, if there's a certain amount of quantity for the over excavation, so if they go above or below that, they either get a credit for a D-Deq or an add for the extra.
All right. So, it would probably be appropriate, after reviewing this here, to move, to amend the resolution to include a unit price, number one, of 52, 52, is it dollars?
Dollars per cubic yard.
Per cubic yard. I would, I would ask that we, you got moved and seconded. We can now have an amendment of that. And the amendment would be to amend the resolution to adopt a unit price of $52 a cubic yard.
Okay, I'll need a, and we're just doing it for the cubic yards?
That's it, yes.
Unit price? Nothing else is to be added? Okay, I'll need a member of council to request this to be amended.
Please. I'll move that amendment, Mayor.
I'll second.
Thank you.
And that's specific to city?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, everyone had to bid it. It's, that number is specific to city.
Yeah.
And I was gonna, I mean, I did the math, so I know that, that we'd have to spend a, there'd have to be a whole lot of overage. But we're not, we don't expect to get anywhere close to that being a difference in the contract.
No, it should be a relatively minor amount when all said and done. But we did the same thing with the water plant. We had a unit price.
Right. I just noticed that that, their price was about twice what some others were. And like I said, I did the math, so I know that we would have to hit a huge amount of overage to, to make, have that make a difference, but.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to the, add the inclusion of the $52 per cubic yard to the resolution to make sure that it's noted. Is that sufficient?
It is.
Okay, could I have a roll call on the amendment?
Can we just clarify also that?
For discussion, please.
Sorry.
It's okay, go ahead, Eric.
Alternate three B is also included in this resolution. I just wanted to make, make clear that.
And that's in the resolution itself, yes.
It, it just hasn't been mentioned, so I just wanted to make sure.
Good point, thank you. Any other questions?
So, so this base vote of this resolution includes the base bid, the HVAC, option one and option two in one vote, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Point of clarification, there'd be two votes, though, correct? One on the amendment and then one on the original motion.
The amendment that's pending now for a roll call vote would be for the inclusion of the unit, right, the cubic yard, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Tracy, roll call on the amendment, please.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other discussion or amendments to add to our resolution? Seeing none.
I'd just like to thank everyone for all the work on this. This has been a long time coming and it's a huge project and I know everyone's excited about it. It's a lot of money, so I'm, you know, feeling a little trepidatious about it, but I know it's, it's, it's going to be good.
Yeah, it is. Good question. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Bermal?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well done, everybody, thank you very much. Kevin, thank you for shepherding this through us. No, not the amendment, but the overall. Item 11 is Solomon's Landing and resolution, or item A is resolution number 2022-96. And this is a resolution approving the stormwater management facilities, maintenance agreement, and easement between the City of North Liberty and Pratt Real Estate Management, Inc., that establishes the terms and conditions under which stormwater management facilities will be maintained for Solomon's Landing, Part One, in the City of North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for this resolution, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions?
Mayor, my question, why are they having to do this per part? Because there's multiple parts to this project, yes? So, is this just to, to start on what will begin as the construction? Why, why are we piecemealing this?
This is a prerequisite for final plat approval. We're not doing a final plat right now. This and a developer's agreement are required for construction plan approval. They'll need, they'll need to move forward. They'll need to have these executed and approved by city council in order to move forward with the construction plans. And then there is, if they want, once they're ready for final plat approval, they'll need to do that, they'll need these in place by then. So, but there is a, there is a phasing element to this. The entire 80 is being platted.
Yeah.
But it, but they are including the stormwater detention basin in the, in the first portion of this. And so, this gives us everything we're going to need moving forward throughout the future phases of this. And it's, this is procedurally appropriate at this point.
Okay. It's a great question, Brent, thank you. Any other questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Harrington?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B then is resolution number 2022-97, a resolution approving the developer's agreement for Solomon's Landing, Part One, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for this resolution, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions about the developer's agreement? All right, Tracy, roll call, please.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much. Item 12 is the LIHWAP agreement, and this is resolution number 2022-98, a resolution approving the water utility vendor agreement for the low-income household water assistance program between HACAP, the local community action agency, and the City of North Liberty. Could I have a motion for this resolution, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions for staff? All right. Tracy, roll call, please.
Wesson?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13 are the assessments on the agenda, resolution number 2022-99, a resolution assessing delinquent amounts owed to the City of North Liberty, Iowa, to the individual property taxes. Could I have a motion for this resolution, please?
So moved.
Second.
Give it a motion and a second. Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last item, item 14, Emory Place rezoning, and this is our second consideration of ordinance number 2021, I'm sorry, 2022-21, in ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from the RM 21 multi-unit residence district to RM 21 multi-unit residence district planned area development. Could I have a motion for the second consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 15 are items of old business, things that we've, anything to bring up? All right, item 16 is new business? You're burning to say something, but not, really? Okay, all right.
If folks can go support the North Liberty pantry tomorrow?
Oh.
Yeah, tomorrow we drink.
Yep, for taste tour.
Thank you. What time is that?
5:30 to 7:30.
Thank you, Eric.